Order, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Just in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll start off with Citizen Concerns, round one. Anybody here to speak for anything that is not on the agenda? All right, see, nothing. I'm gonna move on to item two, which is approval of the agenda. I am gonna move that with taking eight B out of the consent and moving that behind item number thirteen. So eight B is the authorization to initiate hiring practices, and we'll move that behind item thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? That passes five to zero, moving on to the consent agenda. Items eight, three through nine, excuse me. Author, constituted consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the April twenty-six, 2022 meeting. Item four is approval of claims. Item five, approval of 2080 agreement between Woodbury County, Iowa, and the Woodbury Soil and Water Conservation District for funding and management of a watershed inspection and maintenance program in Woodbury County, state of Iowa. Item six from the county auditor is approve the liquor license application for White Horse Patrol Club in Sergeant Bluff. Item seven from board administration is approval of notice of property resolution for parcel known as fourteen thirty-three Hill Dahl Avenue for Tuesday, May seventeenth at four thirty-five PM. Item eight A is approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. And item nine A is approval of resolution for tax suspension for KH. And nine B is approval to lift tax suspension for TM. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes five to zero. Item ten is from citizen Daniel Cotter. Wants us to consider resolving to rid the county of fraud-enabled machines and restore citizen confidence and the validity of our election process. Daniel, I have to move your item to information item as a, and you've got three minutes to bring it up here as far as what you want to say. I'm gonna preempt something and let you know that the Board of Supervisors does not have the authority to do this, but come right on up.
Okay, I would like to ask the board to advance a vote of no confidence in the ability of machines we use in our election process to provide, to, to give confidence to the voters that our vote is as we, as we voted. There's a lot of information that's become public that shows that machines are able to be tampered with, the counts are able to be changed, the votes are able to be changed. That's a feature of the machines. And the last figure I saw was that sixty percent of the American public suspect that the machines cannot be trusted. If you have that percentage of the population that's voting that does not have confidence that their votes will count as cast, then you can't have security, you can't have the, you can't have the confidence that people think their vote is counting. So I want, I don't know what, when you say the board doesn't have authority for that.
So I guess as just information that, you know, the state of Iowa determines rules and how auditors can conduct election and what equipment they can use, and I believe the machines we have were bought, what, about two years ago? And we were given a list of resources or types of machines that we were allowed to buy, and as far as, you know, where you can go as an avenue is probably more or less the state legislature, and the Board of Supervisors doesn't have the authority, and we don't necessarily, I mean, we were involved in the purchasing of them, but that's not our, our decision as to what machines we're allowed to buy or how we conduct the elections necessarily.
I think the board underestimates its power in that regard because the board can determine what is done in this county and still meet the requirements that the state has mandated.
Go ahead.
I'm Pat Gill, I'm the Woodbury County Auditor, and I don't know where you're getting your information, but fifty-two-two is the Iowa code section that references this. It says notwithstanding any provision to the contrary, for elections held on or after November fourth, two thousand and eight, the county shall use an optical scan voting system only. The requirements of the Federal Help America Vote Act relating to disabled voters shall be met by a county through the use of electronic ballot marking devices that are compatible with the optical scan voting system. So the board has no authority to act on what you have presented to them. What they could do, the board could put it on the agenda as an action item in order to pass a resolution that would pass that to the Iowa Legislature, but this board has no authority to do it. I have no choice but to use electronic voting machines. But I am curious as to your statement, "Election machinery is a primary tool employed in the process of election fraud, vote switching, and disenfranchisement of voters." You've presented nothing.
No, I have not presented evidence.
And where do you get that? Can you point to me one case where it has been settled that election equipment has been used to process election fraud, vote switching, or disenfranchisement of voters? Can you present one case where someone has been charged and convicted of using equipment to do that?
I did not come prepared to do that, so no, I can't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, let's see, we're about there. We have two minutes. Mark, do you think we can receive bids in about two minutes?
Yes.
Okay, no, we're gonna, we're gonna wait till the set time. So we'll go to item twelve A, receive bids for project number one thirty street fencing and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation.
We received an email quote, so it's already open for you. It was from Northwest Landscaping Incorporated of Hall, Iowa, and the bid was a total of ninety-two hundred dollars. That was the only bid received. Recommend a word?
I'll move it.
Can I ask a question, though? It was motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. Is this for the individual that has been sending us a lot of emails lately?
Yes.
Okay. Is this on his property or on ours?
Yes, it's on our line between his property and the county easement. So this is the line fence that separates private property from the public right-of-way.
Should we not just give him the quote and give him a check for ninety-two hundred and have him either decide whether or not he's gonna do it or not?
I would prefer to have the fence in place and be able to put that part of our discussion with this individual to bed.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, so we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five, zero, thanks, and now we got four forty set time. So eleven A is the public hearing on a zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone GIS parcel eight-nine-four-six-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-nine owned by the Joint Revocable Trust of Alan O. Zellmer and Barbara Zellmer from the agricultural preservation, I can't talk today, to the agricultural estate zoning district.
Okay, basically, this is concurrently being completed with a minor subdivision, and it's really a reconfiguration of a couple lots, and when they reconfigured them, the whole concept is that the parcels have to match the zoning district, so the whole purpose of the rezon is to bring the parcel into the agricultural estates so that the reconfigured lots can fit within. The zone, this was presented to the zoning commission, they have recommended it, and we have not received any comments from the public in opposition to this proposal.
All right, so we're in a public hearing, anybody heard, to be heard on this item?
And now, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. So eleven B is conduct and approve the first reading of the ordinance, I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five, zero. And we're just about to the set time here, we are. Conduct, let's see, item C, eleven C is public hearing on zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone GIS parcel number eight-seven-four-seven-zero-five-two-zero-zero-zero-two owned by the Maxi's Family Farm LLC and the Brian and Bonnie Eifner Trust from the Agricultural Preservation to the Agricultural Estates zoning district.
Okay, and again, similar to the last one, this is being completed concurrently with a minor subdivision process. This is to establish four lots that are just right off of Sergeant Bluff to the east. They need to switch the rezon, or zoning district agricultural states because that allows more houses within a quarter-quarter section, so this kind of goes in line with that process. Again, the public was notified, we haven't received any form of communication in opposition to this proposal. There's a little bit of flood plain there, which is outside of the building zone, but otherwise, the zoning commission has recommended this for approval.
Anyone to be heard on this? Public hearing is open.
And now, Mr. Chair, I move that the public hearing be closed.
I'll second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to eleven D is conduct and approve the first reading of the ordinance. I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving back to the engineer, twelve B is award low bid if clear, quote is clearly determined by bid result, so we did have a low bid, I'll move to award the bid to Northwest Landscaping in the amount of ninety-two hundred.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
One of the reasons I would be not in favor of just giving the landowner the funding would be as long as we supply, or as long as we award the bid, the fencing company would work for us and put the fencing where it needs to be.
Okay.
Does that sound about right?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five, zero. Twelve C, award the front wheel assist tractor quote to S&amp;S Equipment for a new McCormick X six-point-three-five tractor for sixty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I want to make the board aware, this year, our new equipment purchases, purchase prices are much higher than they were last year. Motor graders were over forty thousand dollars higher, the loader was almost fifty thousand dollars higher, the trucks were, I think, eighteen thousand higher each, and we're looking at another fifty-eight hundred dollar surcharge being tacked on top of that. I'll be having to make a budget adjustment to make the McCormick work in the budget, but our old tractor will not pull that more, and we definitely need it, so we'll be making a budget adjustment through Dennis next year for this, but I did want you to know that this puts us over what we had budgeted in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three for equipment, but it'll be the last thing we purchase this year. We had hoped to get a couple of pickups and some other minor equipment, but those are off the table now at this point.
Pickup trucks are quite a bit higher than, thirty percent higher, so.
The, yeah, if we could even find them. The costs we're seeing on, on equipment this year is just.
Well, the cost to maintain just got cheaper, basically, so if you can stretch it out, do so.
We're replacing a nineteen-nineties vintage tractor that the power takeoff will not drive new three-point hitch equipment. The power takeoffs are a different configuration on that old tractor than they are on the new equipment that we try to run with. But I did want you to know that we're, this is putting us just fifty-seven thousand over what we had projected for budget for new equipment. Again, I will find that money out of the budget, make an adjustment.
Did anybody want to blame anybody on why? Say it's the board's fault, or, no, I'm just teasing.
I mean, it's the nature of the beast this year.
I know. So I'll go ahead and move twelve C.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five, zero. Twelve D is award the quote to Boyer Truck Sioux Falls, South Dakota for one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-eight-eight-six and one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-four respectively for each truck.
And again, each truck will have a fifty-eight hundred dollar model year surcharge placed upon it. Supposedly, we have a slot in the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-three so we get these and they don't come into fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. It is definitely the, well, I can't even call the seller department because our dealers are having difficulty finding equipment and getting it out there. We are replacing two aging trucks that have cost us a good deal of money in engine and other repairs in the last couple of years, so.
So typically, in a normal year, if you were to replace a truck, you know, they build it, how long would it take, like, three months?
In, in the past, we've ordered our trucks typically in May, and we've had that truck by November. Last year, we ordered in May, we still don't have last year's truck, and it's subject to a twenty-nine-hundred dollar upcharge because it got bumped from twenty-two into fiscal, or into model year twenty-three. That truck's currently, the chassis was finally delivered three weeks ago, and it's being built at Stephens as we speak. These, they're anticipating that we'll be looking at them maybe in June of next year at the earliest. Motor graders and, and the unloader, they're expected to come in on time, which is, we usually receive motor graders and loaders in September, October, so we'll have both of those for winter, or all three of those for winter.
Sounds good, I'll move item D.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Mark. Item thirteen from the county sheriff, approve a paid intern position for the sheriff's office.
Good afternoon or evening, whichever, I guess. I am coming forward to ask for the board's approval to approve a paid internship for the sheriff's office for this summer, starting probably in a couple of weeks, once we can get the person through a background investigation and get them through the proper paperwork with HR. I'm not asking for an increase in budget. We have multiple openings in, in the jail that we're not, you know, we're not paying salaries right now. So the thirty-six-hundred to forty-five-hundred dollars that we would pay this, this paid intern will just absorb into our budget, so we're not asking for any additional resources, it's just that because it is an internship position, Melissa said it required board approval, and, and that's why I'm here. The reason that we're, that we're asking for this position is I had reached out to our detectives, and there is a whole ton of work that needs to be done before we move into the new building, simple things like loading pictures and scanning photos and a lot of work that they're currently doing, and we're paying them their hourly rate to do that work. In this paid intern, we're gonna, we'll pay fifteen dollars an hour, and we'll be able to, you know, hopefully get maybe three days a week out of that intern through the summer and at a much reduced cost than what we would pay the deputies, so that's, that's what we're asking for.
And the, I talked with Melissa, too, the position's gonna be treated like a seasonal employee, essentially, so.
Yes, no benefits, no, nothing like that.
I guess if there's any questions from the board.
Is one gonna be enough?
For right now, I think just for the sake of them being able to manage the intern and not overwhelm our detectives, because they'll still have other assignments, the student, we have a student in mind who's at Wayne State College in forensics, so that student will also assist them if anything comes up, you know, during the summer, so it'll be a, it's, the person's gonna get some college credit for it, at the same time, we'll, we'll make some money and we'll, we'll assist, assist us in getting some of that tedious work out of the way. Our hope is that next summer, the same student would be available, which would take us into about the time we're moving into the new building, and we would be able to utilize that student for a two or three year period next year as well. Now, would we have to come back for board approval next year, or if that's approved, would be?
Okay.
So we're, I mean, we're kind of strategically trying to plan ahead for the inevitable move, and so that's, that's where we're at.
Does this person want to know about law enforcement?
They want, yes, more on the forensic side, though, on crime scene processing and stuff like that, which if trends continue, we may eventually need someone that is specialized in something like that. Right now, I mean, our guys specialize in that, but not quite to the level of what the police department would have, so there's also maybe some hope in four or five years when this person graduates, if, if there's an opportunity that, you know, we can recruit and retain.
Something about a camel in a tent right here, just.
I'll second, we got a motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you, and now I'll move eight B, which is the human resources authorization to initiate hiring process.
Can we just move this from the consent, considering the intern was on this authorization? So I wanted to make sure that was approved first, before we approved this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five, zero. Moving on to item fourteen, thank you. Board of Supervisors, Jeremy Taylor, approve funding request in the amount of five thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents from Gaming Fund for Nature Center's security camera system.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We have Dan Heisel with us, Conservation Director. At our Conservation Board meeting, we talked about safety and security concerns and the fact that there have been several incidents now, and having a Nature Center's security camera system would help not only apprehending potentially some of those perpetrators, but maybe stopping repeat offenders by involving law enforcement as well. They have dedicated funds in the amount of eight thousand some-odd dollars that they specifically set aside for this purpose, and that left five thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. They were gonna come to us and ask to do a CIP over five years, so at that rate, when we're at around a thousand dollars, I said, maybe the board would look at gaming revenue, which we have, I think, plenty of in terms of the scope of what this costs. They said, did we hear you say all of it? And I said, no, five thousand two-hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Yeah, it was a good drive, but I, I think it's a reasonable request, and I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, Dan.
No, I just appreciate Jeremy stepping up. We had, I had talked to Kenny with Building Services about the camera system, and of course, knowing that he had no money, and then we talked about the budgeting process and the incidents that we had that we needed the camera system, and he said, well, you could come back next year and we could put it in on CIP. At the time, our bids were coming a lot higher, they ranged from the fifteen to thirty, and so we got that low one last, so it was a good thing, so when you and I talked, and that's where that five thousand we weren't budgeted for. We set aside twenty percent of fundraising that they do at the Nature Center for building stuff like that in the building, and we only had eight, and so this is a good suggestion.
And the only thing I would add is if, if this wasn't funded and they simply relied on their fundraising, there, there's two bites at the apple, so to speak. They're gonna implement something like two-thirds of the camera system and have them come back a year later and implement the other third, well, when you have a vendor do that, a lot of times in these kind of systems, now you have to have updates and synchronize, and just, like, the juice isn't worth the squeeze.
And licensing, which we found out they pride charges new licenses, so I appreciate your offer to come forward for us with the board, so thank you.
I'll take any questions or discussion, or if not, I'd, I'd move approval in the amount of fifty, five thousand two-hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents from Gaming for the Nature Center's security camera system.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Ung. How are we sitting on Gaming?
Um, I just, glad to report, this last month, our check was the largest check we've ever got from Hard Rock, it's thirteen thousand over our estimate, so this is easy.
Why'd you have to mention thirteen exactly, but?
Hey, hey, thirteen, that was the cost of the camera system.
You already made your commitment. Gaming, I'm true.
No, thank you.
That's for one month?
Yep. Forty-five thousand, what our take was.
Wasn't it like twenty-five thousand a year back, just like three, four years ago?
Yeah, it was twenty-five, twenty-seven. We estimated thirty-two thousand for this fiscal year, and next year, we estimated a little higher now with the way it's going around. I think he's going this route.
The imbecile tax.
Gaming taxes keep going up.
Yeah, taxes are a lot.
All right, well, any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five, zero, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your support.
Item fifteen, reports on committee meetings.
Rolling Hills, about a three-hour Rolling Hills Government and Support Meeting. Four things, one is the cost for the Crisis and Stabilization Centers, both Plains Area and Siouxland Mental Health are up between thirty to fifty percent. We are relying on one-time funding, and I think what we're telling these providers is we can do this, to this level this year, and Rolling Hills is set to have their per-capita go up the next two years, it'll be funded by the state, but at some point, the rubber's gonna meet the road, so I've asked for an agenda item to say, this is what our projected revenue is the next two years so that they can plan, are we gonna fund this at eighty-eight percent or ninety percent? The other two things I presented on chaplaincy and veterans issues, and thank them for the way that they help us. They are looking to replace their 2080 with an MOU, and something I'm asking Joshua to review. One of the items in there is, who are these employees' employees of? Are they going to become regional employees? Some people want that. The MOU that they're asking for is that the employees be county employees of the county in which they reside. So if you reside in Woodbury County, you're a Woodbury County employee, according to this MOU, so that's something that I'm asking Joshua to look over, and then we'll have to pass that as a board, and so will all these other county boards of supervisors yet again. Last thing, Sheila Martin told me that they're up to nineteen. Last thing, Sheila Martin told me that they're up to 19,000 telehealth appointments, 2,100 new patients, up 66% since the pandemic.
That's insane.
It really is a lot of work, a lot of stress post-COVID, so that's all I got.
Matthew?
No.
I had Simcoe's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies meeting, there's a community survey out there, and not a lot of people responding, and I tried responding myself, and there's a lot of issues with the menus on it, so I'm thinking maybe that's why there's a low turnout on that, but other than that, that's, that's something they normally do every five years, we just did it two years ago, but there was a catalyst to make us have to kind of go through that process again. And it's good to report that a lot of the strategies and initiatives we had from two years ago are actually implemented and going. So one of those is obviously being like tele-education type or, you know, distance learning type things. Schools had to do that anyway because of COVID, so, all right, so those committee meetings, item 16, citizen concerns. Item 17, which is board concerns.
I got one. I will be on a business trip to India to meet with the medical billing team I work with over the next board meeting, so I will attempt to call in.
Do you know what time it'll be there?
Hmm?
What time it will be over there?
It'll be 3:00 AM, so if you guys want to keep it short, I won't hold it against you.
You gonna try and sell us a car warranty while you're over there?
No, no, the ones I work with are better than that.
All right, so, anybody else? All right, so there's a meeting that we had with the sheriff and Pat out at EMS, kind of discussed some of the security and FOB access that is in place there, and what maybe improvements we could make. We're gonna meet again and make some recommendations probably here in the near future. And, you know, one thing that was brought up from our previous director before he left, not previous, but previous before that, was reorganizing the emergency services department and eliminating clerk two position, and then having just a director that is maybe less of a responder and more of just the director. And I actually kind of agree with the recommendation that he had made, and while we have other clerk two openings in the county, it might be a good time to pursue that, and I'm gonna get some more information, probably bring something forward on the agenda here in the near future, too. Anybody else? All right, very adjourned.